Here. Here. Here.
...
We're back from closed session. The public announcement of closed session actions taken concerning item C1, case number 961540, by a vote of six to zero to one, the board took action to approve of the settlement of special education litigation in accordance with the terms of a written agreement. The announcement of closed session actions is complete and the closed session stands adjourned. That's adjournment of closed session, call to order at 5:20.
Here.
Here.
Presente.
Here.
Here.
Board member Fredericks, will you do the pledge?
Jonathan Gardner.
Good evening, members of the board. Dr. Blanco, my name is Jonathan Gardner, President and United Teachers of Pasadena. I rise to counter the dangerous content and tone of the upcoming presentation that LACO will be delivering. This year's budget that you are apparently conditionally accepting is now the fourth year in a row that PUSD has defunded the classroom. And yet not once has LACO even mentioned that they are depriving classrooms of the resources they deserve, but rather rubber stamped a waiver that certifies PUSD can continue defunding its classrooms. Instead, after the devastating wildfires and other school site chaos, LACO representatives deigned to chide PUSD for not cutting enough teachers. How dare you? Students and families have been ripped apart by your broken and failed oversight. You see nothing wrong with all the districts you oversee failing to meet their legal minimum on classrooms and instead threatening cajole about how in an uncertain time, PUSD must make even more cuts in the classroom. Can you not see that PUSD is overspending compared to its peers in contracted services and in central office expenses? Can you not see that PUSD had two audit findings about not spending enough on students and you rubber stamped those waivers without even trying to encourage them to invest in stability in their classrooms? How dare you come in here and pretend to provide oversight and instead give further cover to the overbloated central office admin and outside contractors that PUSD is wasting its funding and grants on as opposed to ensuring students receive a proper, caring, supportive learning experience? If PUSD had properly funded its classrooms and focused on first-time success from the start, they would not be scrambling to backfill with all the extra admin contracts and centralized supports. The county supervisors like our own Catherine Barger should be ashamed that their oversight is allowing this sort of classroom defunding to multiply. LACO, as their education representatives, should not be sending in people to yell at our PUSD superintendent and board for not cutting enough teachers and school site staff. I hope that the board will target its cuts and direction following this presentation on best practices for teaching, learning, and LCAP strategies and not on the sorts of devastating cuts to teaching, learning, and school stability that have so far come from LACO's oversight. Thank you.
Do we have anything else? Nothing? Okay. So we will move on to our special presentation. H. with Dr. Sergio Canal.
Madam President and Dr. Blanco, I'd like to introduce to you, from Los Angeles County Office of Education, we have our Chief Financial Officer, David Hart, the Director of Business Advisory Service, Octavio Castello, Financial Advisory Services Officer, Stephen Choi, and Financial Advisor Services Officer, David Wilson, for their presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Canal, members of the board, Madam Superintendent. Thank you very much for allowing us to be here. My name is Octavio Castello and the Director of Business Advisory Services with the Los Angeles County Office of Education. My primary function within the County Office of Education, out of the many, is to safeguard the fiscal solvency of every school district in the county. I'm responsible for reviewing all 79 school districts' budgets, their interim filings, as well as their unouted actials to see how they fare up. With me is Stephen Choi, who's been directly working with Pasadena for the past several years as a business services consultant, looking at their finances. Also, we have our newest member to LACO, Mr. David Hart, who's here as our Chief Financial Officer, once again showing the urgency of why we're here. Also, we have with us our officer, our newest officer to the department, to the division, is Mr. David Wilson, who was a former Chief Financial Officer at a neighboring school district. So I just want to take this opportunity to discuss the situations that we're seeing here and implore the district to take immediate action to prevent the fiscal insolvency of Pasadena. So I'm not going to read through the slides, I'm going to narrate through it, just have a script here for you. But if you have any questions, we'll be willing to entertain any questions. Good evening, board members, my district leaders and community members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of the Los Angeles County Office of Education regarding Pasadena Unified School District's fiscal condition. My name is Octavio Castello. Together with my colleagues, we've been working closely with the district to ensure that its financial management and long-term planning remain sound and sustainable. Tonight, I will outline the urgent fiscal matters facing Pasadena Unified School District, summarize the findings that led to the conditional approval of the 2526 budget, and discuss the interventions authorized under California Education Code 42127.6, the state's primary safeguard to protect districts from insolvency. Under the California Education Code, county superintendents have both the authority and obligation to intervene when a district may not meet its financial obligations in the current or subsequent fiscal years. The law empowers the county to investigate the district's fiscal condition, notify the governing board if risks are found and determined, and intervene if necessary to ensure that essential services to students continue uninterrupted. In practical terms, this means the county must review budgets and interim reports to verify that each district maintains solvency for the current and next two fiscal years. When red flags appear, such as ongoing deficit spending, declining enrollment, or unsustainable expenditure patterns, the county is required to act. Our goal is not punitive intervention, but preventative collaboration. The aim here is to stabilize the district before the situation becomes critical. This year, Pasadena Unified received a conditional budget approval due to several areas of fiscal concern. We're currently reviewing the plan that was submitted on October 6th to make a determination on whether or not we can lift the conditional approval to your budget. The district's multi-year projection shows 149.4 million cumulative decline in its unrestricted general fund over three years. This is a serious warning signal. Even though the district has made strides in reducing the deficit year over year, the overall shortfall remains alarming. The key pressures to this include the expiration of the ESTR funds, which were temporarily federal relief dollars that masked a lot of the deficit spending, the economic impact of the recent wildfires which affected property taxes and attendance, and the persistent enrollment and ADA declines which directly reduce state revenue. These factors combined to create a structural deficit, a recurring imbalance between revenue and expenditures. Our financial analysis shows that beginning in fiscal year 2324, expenditures began to outpace revenues, and the gap has widened sharply in recent years. The district is effectively spending more each year than it brings in, which is unsustainable without sufficient corrective action. While the fiscal stabilization plan identifies 83.1 million in combined reductions and revenue enhancements between fiscal year 2526 and 2728, these plans must be implemented with urgency and accountability. The county's conditional approval is contingent on Pasadena's progress towards these reductions. Without timely adjustments, the district risks triggering more serious intervention, including the assignment of a fiscal expert, as was the case in Duarte, the fiscal advisor, as was the case at Montebello Unified School District, and in more severe cases, when a state loan is drawn down, a fiscal advisor who serves as trustee over the district and actually serves over trustee over the district and has full authority over the district. Enrollment in average daily attendance are the lifeblood of school funding in California. Pasadena continues to experience declining enrollment and ADA. The gap between funded ADA and actual P2 ADA shows the stabilization has not yet been reached. This decline translates directly into reduced state revenue. Every small drop in ADA can result in millions of dollars of lost funding, forcing difficult budget choices. Therefore, enrollment, management, attendance improvement, and demographic planning must remain at the forefront of the district's fiscal solvency recovery. Addressing these challenges requires Pasadena to do business differently. The county strongly supports the district's stated commitment to long-term sustainability and innovation. Some examples are already in discussion. These include revenue enhancements, reassessing facility rental agreements to ensure community use is charged at fair market value, adjusting usage fees to better recover costs without creating profit motives, and exploring partnerships or grant opportunities aligned with the district facilities and programs. They're also undergoing some examination of expenditure management, including evaluating staffing ratios, particularly in the context of declining enrollment, implementing program audits to ensure spending aligns with student outcomes and strategic goals, strengthening internal controls and data accuracy for financial reporting. And we strongly encourage you to examine the special education services as the contributions to the unrestricted general fund have increased over $50 million. Long-term sustainability also means developing mechanisms to anticipate risk, such as declining enrollment, pension cost increases, and one-time funding cliffs, and adapting proactively, not reactively. To combine with the conditional budget approval, Pasadena must meet the following deadlines. We're asking by November 2025 to submit the proposed budget reductions to the County Office of Education for evaluation, submit the first interim report with the updated financials and progress on implementing reductions. By March 2026, we ask the district issue the reduction in force notices as needed to align staffing with budget realities. And by July 2026, adopt and implement a new budget reflecting approved reductions. Each of these milestones is required, and failure to meet them could escalate the level of county intervention. I want to emphasize that county oversight is not simply about enforcement, it's also about support. The county's fiscal oversight team is committed to helping Pasadena Unified build capacity, strengthen its financial systems, and identify new pathways to solvency. The county provides technical assistance with budget development, training for district fiscal staff, guidance on multi-year projections and budgets. The ultimate goal is to empower the district to make data-driven decisions that preserve local control while ensuring long-term fiscal health. To the board and the district leadership, the decision made in the upcoming months will define Pasadena's Unified School District's future. You are being asked to make difficult but necessary choices, reductions, reorganizations, and revenue strategies that may be unpopular but are essential to the district's survival. To our community, please understand that these measures are not about cutting for the sake of cutting, they're about preserving educational quality for future generations. Every dollar saved or generated now helps protect classrooms, teachers, and programs down the line. In conclusion, Pasadena Unified stands at a fiscal crossroads. The combination of declining revenue, rising costs, and post-pandemic transitions has created a fragile financial landscape. But with disciplined implementation of the fiscal stabilization plan and a spirit of transparency and collaboration, this district can emerge stronger and more resilient. Our shared mission is clear: to safeguard the financial health of Pasadena Unified School District so that every student continues to receive the education they deserve today, tomorrow, and for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions? Questions or comments? Yes, of course. Ms. Kitney.
Thank you for your presentation. I had one question for you. Back in our second interim, we had some board members who were concerned and thought that perhaps it should have been qualified, and we felt that, our understanding was that LACO felt that positive was appropriate at second interim, and so this was about two months later that we're getting a conditional approval in June. Do you have any comments on that?
No. You want to?
So we understand that at that point in time, Pasadena did make cuts and notify staff, and there was staffing plans and everything that was going on. The biggest concern was that we were unable to determine how much of it was fully implemented and how much was masked by the wildfire revenues at that point of time. So from the county's perspective, we didn't have the detail necessary to be able to determine if the revenues were masking the overall effects because of all the declining enrollment and the projected ADAs and the impact to the district at that point of time. There were so many factors that, you know, it would have been difficult for us to justify providing a qualified to Pasadena as there were strides in moving and adjusting to the projected deficits.
Thank you. I had a couple of comments. I think a lot of the figures that we're looking at today are from our adopted multi-year projections, and there's been some changes since then. We were able to get, I think, a little bit more TK state funding, which would help our unrestricted. We have a couple block grants, although I realize they're restricted. And then with our actials, we now have a higher ending balance than we did at adopted. And then we seem to have gotten an increase in the amount of fire proceeds between what we thought we had adopted and what came through at actials. I think it was another 40 million. It would certainly be helpful, I think, to the board, perhaps to you, to all of us, to have an updated multi-year projections with these factors rather than waiting till December with first interim. I know we're in the midst of figuring out how much we have to cut, and certainly if we need to cut less or need to cut more, probably the sooner we know that, the better. And I know things will keep changing, but, you know, we can take that into account, that this is what we know now and it could change again, but it's more updated than last June. So that's a request, I guess, from our staff to provide that to us and to you. We were able to look at our actials, at some of our numbers, without the fire insurance, and I do think that's helpful to understand what our actual operating expenses and overages are. I noticed on your sheet, the revenue expenditure trends, one has the fire expenditures, but it doesn't really capture the fire revenues because they came in a different way, and so, not that it, reducing 100 overspending to 70, but it's still something. You know, so I want people to not be quite as alarmed by that, but it's still alarming, I think. So that's one of my requests. And I would, it would also be helpful to understand the cadence of spending our fire insurance proceeds because while they're in our ending balance, they're helpful to cover our 3% reserves, and I don't know with that new money coming in exactly when that will be spent. Will we be spending it all next year? Will we be spending some of it next year? And, you know, will it be covering us a little bit for a while? My concerns kind of center around, I feel like our P2 ADA figure for '25-'26 it adopted might have been a little optimistic, especially looking at what our actual enrollment came in now that we've started school and what our P2 was for last year, and I am a little concerned about our unduplicated percentage. So again, doing that multi-year with those kinds of updated numbers, I think, would be useful. I remain concerned about our special education spending and locking in higher maintenance of effort. To your slide that said we really need to be thinking differently... To your slide that said we really need to be thinking differently, I think is how you said it, doing business differently. This kind of gets back to a conversation we had at our last board retreat about, do we need to do some revisioning or is this more of a time to think about redesigning? I think the cuts we're looking at, it's not ju, I think what I'm really worried about is that we are leaving every structure in place and just cutting pieces of it. And those structures are not going to work at those smaller levels rather than really kind of redesigning. And I think some of what we've seen from staff, when you guys talk about, you know, redesigning how we do athletics, I think that may be what we have to do. We can't just take a little, take a little, take a little. And so somehow we've got to get to that kind of, how are we going to do things very differently? Because I think just keeping that structure and kind of nibbling away at it in all these little places, it will hamper our ability to actually serve students within that existing structure. Thank you.
So, um, I do have a question here, and I'd like to welcome Board Trustee McKenzie here. These are the Laco people. Oh, yeah, Superintendent wants to say.
Just wanted to get clarification on, um, Mrs. Kenny's comments. So if I can remember them correctly, you're asking us to redo the multi-year projections. So I need to know first of all from Dr. Canal if you and your staff have the capacity to do that. What's the timeline you're looking for? And then if that's a consensus from the full board?
We know that Arminay and the team, um, have started working already towards the, uh, first interim. I know there's a lot of legwork that needs to happen. So I'll need to discuss with the team to try to get a timeline in terms of, obviously, when we do something like that, it just takes a moment. But, um, it is something that can be done.
Okay, all right, good.
Can I clarify?
Yes, go ahead.
So to clarify, I'm just talking about the Excel spreadsheet, not the state forms, where we just look at these big buckets and say, oh, well, that big bucket changed a little.
Understand.
And if it means adjusting some of the entries in the FICMAT calculator to figure out, oh, our revenue will really be slightly different. That's what I'm talking about.
Okay, so then my second question is when you would like to see that by? And if there's consensus from the board, from, from, you know, a majority of the board to do this work or not?
Okay, so here's my, I have two things. One, we would, Ms. Kenny was talking about how we do things. So we have been talking about visioning process for the future, which is something that we are ongoing talking about. So it's really important. Our sped costs obviously keep going up, and we're not exactly getting money from the feds or the state on that one. And I guess what my question is, is if we don't approve these cuts by December, can you just take me as briefly as you can through a step-by-step and the implications of those steps? What it means to this body?
So, and the reason why we're looking at, why we're fixated in December is because you will submit your first interim report to our office. Your first interim captures, captures your financial position up to October thirty-first. So this is what he's mentioning that the staff is working on now, getting the first interim. That comes in the SACS forms, those are all the legal forms that come to our office. And that's what you present and you adopt that first interim. You make a decision based on your financial position, whether or not you're able to meet your minimum required reserves of three percent. If you're unable to meet that without what we call a B-ten plug, was it an artificial number that's included into your forms that you must account for either through a revenue enhancement or through an expenditure reduction? You have the option of filing either positive, if you feel confident, qualified, which says, that tells you and tells us that you may not be able to meet your financial obligations in the subsequent out years, or negative, which means we're in dire straits. We can't meet our financial obligations either in the subsequent years or the immediate year. It's, um, that's a balance. So we get your forms, we review your, your budget, we review your interim filing. And that for us either indicates Pasadena is, they didn't make the necessary cuts, they didn't make the adjustments to their budget, that will either, we can concur with your filing if you file qualified, if you file negative. If you file positive, we're going to scrutinize it and we're going to look at your fiscal stabilization plan. Uh, we're going to look at what's been implemented or not. We have the option of reversing, um, your certification from positive to qualified. Qualified certification at that point will require us to label you a lack-of-going concern, uh, which allows the county superintendent to intervene. In cases such as Duarte, where we did intervene, uh, we put a fiscal expert in there. The fiscal expert worked closely with the staff there at Duarte. They were in a very dire position. They were able to work with them on their budget. They got out of that position within, within several months. Other positions, so that's, that's the least restrictive, um, intervention, is the fiscal expert. If we see that the board still is not taking action, that person can be elevated to a fiscal advisor. A fiscal advisor has full stare, rescind authority over the district's actions, over the board's actions. I served as a fiscal advisor at a school district. And prior to anything going to board, I met with the superintendent when we did the agenda planning and things that I felt that weren't aligned to the district's solvency recovery, I had them pulled from the agenda because I did not want you to take action. If there were any hiring of personnel that vacated position, that was pulled from the agenda because it was not to the path of fiscal recovery for the district. If you draw a loan, if it's an immediate cash insolvency issue and we monitor your cash daily, if we see that cash is going to be a problem or cash flow, if you, if you go out for an immediate, um, loan, immediately the superintendent loses your job. Once that drawn, that, once that loan is drawn, the board has no authority. We appoint a trustee at that point over the district. That's going to come in December. December is going to make that, the critical decision for us as to whether or not to label you a lack-of-going concern, whether or not to see your, your filing as positive, qualified, or negative. And depending on that, we will take different action, hopefully stave off any fiscal insolvency for the district. But December fifteenth for us, when you submit your report to us, your first interim, is going to be critical. That's going to drive a lot of your decisions come in March. And it's, it's imperative for us to see that report timely, and we do an objective assessment of your, of your first interim.
Thank you. Dr. Velazquez?
I would like to hear from the two gentlemen that haven't had the chance to speak yet.
Hi, Dave Wilson, Financial Advisory Services Officer with Laco, also serving in the role of oversight. Just here to provide any support that I can to my colleagues and to the Board of Education.
Thank you. David Hart, CFO for Laco. I think the reason I'm here is, um, we're not treating this casually. We are concerned. And, uh, and these gentlemen have the expertise. Mine, uh, I'm here in support. Happy to answer any questions, but I would not be here if we weren't trying to convey that the clock is ticking. We appreciate the challenges, very unique challenges that Pasadena is facing. But they are, it's going to be tough for you, if not impossible, to revenue your way out of the problem.
And a follow-up question. How do you see the impact of the fires and what that meant for our financial situation?
I'll offer a general comment and then to the specifics, I'll turn it over to the gentleman to my left. What I understand of Pasadena, um, having been at LAUSD previously, is it is a community that has had fiscal difficulties for a period of time. Before the pandemic, uh, the circumstances, the numbers were different, but the characterization of the district has not changed. The various COVID relief funds, and now taken with the fire, the various funds that have come in have essentially buoyed or created a, a rising tide that allowed the district to, avoid having to make some of the reductions or find other means by which, as, uh, was addressed earlier, to raise revenues. But now with the COVID relief funds having been fully expended, the fire funds, uh, essentially coming to a close, while that circumstance is unique, unique is the right word. They're one-time funds and will not sustain the operations of the district such as they are today.
Just to add to that, um, I think that the difficult situation that Pasadena had was essentially, over the years, we, Laco had commented, uh, that we saw that there was deficit spending, that enrollment was declining. I know that, um, you know, for the state of California, many of the school districts had that same, faced that same problem. But what we didn't see was that, um, that the leveling off of the decline, right? So as you're, uh, adjusting and, and, and projecting out what you're going to do to make sure that the students had, you know, the best education that they could. However, it seemed that the kids just were not there. And with the fire revenues for the last couple of years, or the last year, it, it hid some of the, uh, abilities for the district to see, um, you know, how quickly things could turn with the deficit spending.
Thank you very much, Ms. Fredericks.
It's kind of a step back a little bit, probably most people, I don't, actually. This is the first time Laco's come when I'm on the board. I've seen Laco come years ago as a parent. So kind of, uh, I think probably a lot of people are shocked by this. It feels like a zero to sixty. So maybe if someone can explain, maybe it's not zero to sixty that you've been watching this. But people out there haven't seen the signs. So, um, so I would like that explanation for the public as well as explaining your visit. And is this sort of the last chance? Like what is the, if things don't get better the way you think it should, is this the final warning or is there intermediary steps? Is, how fast can this go? You know? I think people need a little concrete.
It's not, it hasn't been a zero to sixty. We've notified the board on our communications, that all our communications are to the board president on your fiscal standing and some of our concerns. And letters dating back several years, or I shouldn't say several years, at least three or four years have identified that. Your, your level of deficit spending, monitor your level of deficit spending, monitor your declining enrollment. It was, yes, this was exacerbated by the fires, and yes, it was masked by COVID when you have all this one-time revenue. We, we spoken to staff and said, you do not hire people for money that's not sustainable. If people, if people are living off this money, you know, people who you have to feed their families should not be hired on money that's only temporary. We've laid that down over and over again. We've communicated with the board presidents on all our communications because the board president has the fiduciary responsibility, all the board members have the, the fiduciary responsibility over this, the solvency of your district, over every, every student in the district. AB twelve hundred, we call it Assembly Bill twelve hundred, which put all these provisions in place for school districts and county, uh, county office authority, ceases as a, a, a green light, which is go, which you've been given the green light. Consider this a yellow light that says, you need to take intervention now. The red light would be the county stepping in and saying, you're negative, we're putting a trustee in, you're taking out a loan. That is the red light that says stop. With the conditional budget approval, you're at a yellow light. It's up to you to make those decisions as to whether or not you're going to progress to the green light again or whether or not you're going to dig further deeper into the red light in which the county office will intervene and put somebody in here.
So the trustee example? Is that where we don't have any say anymore at that point?
That's correct. If you look at Inglewood Unified School District, they've been in receivership now with the county administrator, previously it was a state administrator, for over thirteen years. That board isn't, is elected by, by their constituents, but they have no authority. The authority lies with the county administrator, Dr. Jim Morris. Part of his responsibility and job is to train that governance board, the governing board, to make, make sure that when he leaves as a county administrator, that they can govern over the district. If we put a fiscal advisor in, um, that fiscal advisor has stay and rescind authority over any board action. That's not, that's in contrary to your fiscal solvency recovery.
Is the fiscal advisor before the trustee stuff?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and that's where you look at our December at that point and see if we are, if you're confident?
Yes, if we're confident. So, um, before that, we may put in a fiscal expert. We, we will label you what's called a lack-of-going concern. At that point, it gives the county superintendent the authority to put in a fiscal expert. And that fiscal expert will work with your fiscal staff, with the governing board, to help develop a budget. They don't have any stay or rescind authority, but they're an expert on fiscal recovery or solvency, and they'll help with the recovery of the district.
So you had said about being proactive versus reactive. And one of the slides says, you know, we gotta cut the thirty, you know, find that thirty million, which, those are people, those are salaries. That feels reactive.
I, I will comment, and I, I do want to take note and acknowledge that we understand the board has been trying to be less reactive and more proactive towards these decisions and trying to make sure that you have a long-term plan. But, um, one of the reasons that, um, I guess we're, we're here and to stress, you know, the urgency of the situation is it's rare to see, um, districts go from having a budget, uh, you know, fiscal stabilization plan to not, to having another, uh, one again, right? And Pasadena really has had that over the years, especially in recent light, right? You've had a budget stabilization plan, you went off of it, and then you're, you're back kind of at it again, right? And I know that the goal of the board is really just to plan so that you are able to forward look and not have to do these adjustments reactively.
Thank you for that, uh, context. One more thing is one of the, few of the recommendations were, uh, you know, uh, looking at our fees, our facilities fees. I mean, that's not going to make up thirty million. And which speaks to the comment earlier about you can't revenue your way out of this. I'm connecting those dots. Unless you want to explain that a little more. That, that's it. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Harden and then student board member, Mr. Kittle.
I, I appreciate the directness and I appreciate you being here. And, and I do, um, certainly recognize the seriousness of, the immediate term seriousness of our fiscal situation. I'm generally an optimistic person. This challenges that optimism, obviously. But I do think, and I appreciate it, uh, my colleague, uh, Ms. Kenny, uh, about, about your point made, doing business differently. I think that, you know, we're, I, I'm confident we're going to get through, um, this, this immediate, um, crisis. We're going to give you enough confidence to let us continue to chart our own course. But I do impress upon, um, the board and, and, and the superintendent to have the courage immediately thereafter to think long-term about our district's, uh, structure, how we serve our students, um, and redesign, re-envision and redesign our district for long-term sustainability. We can do this, and we can have what we want, and I actually believe we can thrive. But we know there are systemic challenges. Uh, and we also know that the environment that we're in, both at the local level and at the broader state and national level, is going to require that we rethink how we serve our students. And so I'm committed to that. I think that's, um, the most important gift that we can give to our students and our families and our community is to have a district that can kind of punch through the waves of uncertainty that we face and that we're going to continue to face. So, um, this is, this is going to be a, a long-term problem. Thank you.
Mr. Kittle. And then Ms. McKenzie.
All right, so, um, I remember when Ms. Tina Fredericks was asking you, you said that Eagle Rock has had a trustee for thirteen years now, is that correct?
Yes, Inglewood Unified School District has had a trustee.
Inglewood?
Yeah, now county administrator, right.
Okay, and then I was wondering, like, once you reach that trustee level, is there any way to regain autonomy?
Yes, there is, but it's very extensive because not only Yes, there is, but it's very extensive because not only are, are you safeguarding your finance, the finances from the state loan, FICMAT also comes in, the Fiscal Crisis Management Assistance Team will actually come in and start assessing your district. Because usually it's a systemic breakdown, so we're not, it's only budget control. But we're also looking at your governance, because governance didn't take action. I always say inaction is inaction, and if you're not taking any action, you're taking inaction. They'll look at your HR, your labor practices, because that's, that, your eighty-five to ninety percent of your expenditures are tied to human resources. So if you don't have position control in place, they're going to examine what kind of processes you have for position control. There's a variety of areas, you're going to look at your facilities, because oftentimes you have a surplus of facilities if you're in declining enrollment. Are you combining, are you surplusing property accordingly? We look at your internal controls, they'll come in and, and, and look at, examine the entire district. It's an arduous process, and the district has to make gains. They have to come first assess your district to see where they are, and then they make, they assess on whether or not you're making gains towards independence again. So you can restore that autonomy, but it's rigorous, and it's arduous, uh, but it's not impossible. I think within the next couple of years, you'll hear, well, right, even right now, we just had a meeting with Inglewood, great things are happening in there and will happen there, but for you not to be able to control your district, for you to have a say in what happens to your students. I know the trustee there or the county administrator has a heart for the students of Inglewood. The one thing we want to do is keep control here with you. You were elected by your constituents. Mr. Kittle, you're a student. I mean, you know what's best for Pasadena. I don't. You do. So the trust should be with you, and that's what the ultimate goes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then, um, I just wanted to go back. You said that we would be assessed on just how we're making gains. Is that because we will have no authority, so they're assessing how the trustee is doing then?
We also, we assess a trustee, but we also assess, you're still going to have staff here. So we're going to assess your fiscal, your fiscal staff, your CFO. We're going to assess, and great questions, by the way, because I love those kind of questions. Uh, this is the stuff, the stuff I deal with every day. So yeah, they'll come in there, they'll assess the progress of your staff, and they have indicators, they have benchmarks that you have to meet. They'll go in there and examine like your food services, like what are the, what are the procurement processes that you're using? Internal controls, time and attendance, how are you keeping time and attendance of all your employees? How are you issuing checks? Do you have safeguards in place? Because there's been a systemic, there's a breakdown in that system that's allowed this to happen. The governing board, what kind of actions are they taking? Are there actions, um, favoring one trustee area, or are they really voting on behalf of the entire district? So we look at governance ship, they look at a, a myriad of areas. But we do assess, more than anything else, is assessment of the staff. The county administrators, they're kind of facilitating the process, to safeguard the district and make sure it makes, um, decisions in the best interest of the students. But it's an, it's more assessment of the staff.
Okay, thank you.
There are many school districts that are struggling financially right now. Not necessarily because of the fire, but because of AB 218 claims that are exacerbating districts budgets. Those are sexual assault and molestation claims, that the burden is on the district to prove that we did our due diligence, when oftentimes the claimants are, or the person that was the perpetrator is likely deceased. So how do you prove, how do you ride that burden of proof? There are many, many districts that are struggling with that, you know, we're not accepted from that situation. And because of that, and because the statute of limitations is almost indefinite, that is a strain on districts budgets in a way that no one foresaw being able to come. So my question is, how many other districts in LA County, out of the eighty districts, are you having like conversations with? Because I imagine that through a myriad of other circumstances, situations, we are not the only ones that you're having these kinds of meetings with. So if we're, who else is having, not who, but like how many of the districts do you have these meetings with? And what are you advising in terms of how do you recover from those kind of, that are kind of outside of your control almost?
If, if you're referring to budget conditional approvals, there, we had two others in the county. We met with their staff. Um, it didn't rise to the level of occasion where it did with Pasadena, but we did meet with Justin de la Puente and their staff, and we also met with the SUSE Unified. And they were able to rectify their budgets. Their, their, their draws weren't as, um, significant as Pasadena's, and they were able to make, uh, immediate adjustments to their budgets. But they did call, they did fall below the three percent reserve requirement in that budget. As far as the AB 218 cases, I agree with you. We're seeing districts that are saying, we're going to have to pay out thirty million dollars in claims. It's going to hit our fund balance. Uh, what do we do? I know FICMAT and ourselves have advocated strongly for some sort of cap, some sort of ceiling. We're advising districts, speak to your insurance carriers. I know oftentimes those insurance carriers are gone, uh, because you're talking about cases back in the nineteen sixties, nineteen seventies. It's, it's a, I think it's, um, a good intent behind the legislation. It's just the unintended consequences of it are, are dismal, and you're paying the price here. You shouldn't be taking money from this year's students for things that happened thirty, forty years ago. It's not fair to these, it's not fair to the students like Mr. Kittle. It's not fair. They, they deserve the best. So we are advocating strongly on a cap. We're arguing, um, we're looking for various ways at the state level because it's legislation that was passed.
Familiar?
Yeah.
And is there legislative courage to make that kind of adjustment or to carry a bill to remedy the, the consequences?
Well, we're seeing the effect, so yeah, there, there is courage because Mr. Kittle and any other student who is in this district shouldn't have to suffer at the hands of something that happened thirty years ago. Yes, horrible, horrible, you know, horrible things that occurred to these students. Uh, but, you know, Mr. Kittle and everybody else should not have to pay the price. But there is legislation, I know FICMAT is looking at something. We do have a governmental relations person in Sacramento on behalf of the county office who has been advocating. We're strongly advocating in business advisory services because we see the impact. For if you don't have insurance, or your carrier's gone, or something happens at that point where it comes out of their general fund or you're paying for it, it's going to have severe impacts on your solvency. So we're advocating strongly for that. And when we meet with districts, we ask them, you know, what's going on with the AB 218 cases? Are they impacting them? Have you gone, have you looked at your insurance carriers? Are they still there? Are they, what's that going to do to premiums in the future? Premiums in your future will go up because it's a statewide, um, issue.
And to address clearly, uh, the question about the number of districts, we don't track that information due to the nature of the cases that are being brought. But we can share that a lot of districts, uh, are sharing that it is a concern for districts. I would advise you to, you know, just communicate if you do have, uh, communications with the legislators on the issues that you have, and maybe, uh, share some of the cases with them specifically. But we don't have that information directly.
So I have one more question. To your point about should a trustee be appointed and the avenue to regain, um, governance authority, what are the, the available tools for being able to increase revenue that a district would have available to them? Because it's not as though we have the ability to go out and just sort of like have a fundraiser. What are, we have limited options in terms of how dollars come into us, and what are those pathways and what are those recommendations?
Just talking with Inglewood, and I'm going to give you an example just because I've worked with them for the past three, five, I don't know how many years now. They had a lot of surplus property. They're declining enrollment. Yes, surplus property you can only use for facilities related, if you sell a property, you can only go back to facilities. But doesn't mean you can't develop the land and do some employee housing. Doesn't mean you can't lease the land and get some revenue in there. There's even some of the lease agreements. If you have a lease agreement with AYSO, perhaps you have a lease agreement with the city to rent out a school, rent out a hall, charge fair market value. You don't want to give a building, you can, you're charging a hundred thousand dollars a year when you can get a hundred thousand dollars a month. It just doesn't make financial prudent, it's not financially prudent to do so. Yes, we, you understand the importance of community, but at the same time, you have a responsible, you have a responsibility to take care of your district. Even some of the things I've seen, even, um, if with, with just cost containment, is oftentimes you have partnerships with AYSO, but guess who has to clean up the field afterwards? Your, your maintenance staff is there maintaining the field, you have to water, you have to maintain it. You can always assess a fee to help cover that operational cost. So it's looking at your agreements that you currently have in place to make sure they're financially viable for the district and making sure you're maximizing them, maximizing your revenue. It's not going to get you out of the jam you have now, but it will make a difference. It will make a dent.
Thank you.
So Ms. Kenny, Ms. Fredericks, and then Ms. Bailey.
I'm sorry, I forgot to ask this earlier. You said something in your beginning, um, words about, I thought I heard you say something about reconsidering our conditional approval. Did I hear that correctly? Is that something happening now or, okay, can you talk a little bit about that?
Find the date. Um, actually, October sixth, we received, uh, a letter from a response to our conditional approval letter from your board member, your board president outlining some of the steps the district is taking. So we're reassessing that letter right now to see whether or not these are measurable and attainable outcomes that will allow us to release the conditional approval to your budget and give you an improved budget. That does not change the position you're currently in now. That just means we're going to monitor you closely again at the first interim and that you need to take action. It's either we approve your budget or we don't approve your budget. Considering that you're not cash insolvent at this point, you are, you're going to, you're going down the path of insolvency because you're deficit spending, you're not cash insolvent, which means you have enough cash right now in a reserve to sustain your payroll. That will give us some sort of flexibility to say, okay, we can give you, we can release the conditions on your budget, and we'll reassess your budget at first, at first interim to see the, whether or not you have a positive or qualified certification. So we're reassessing right now based on, um, what your president, um, Hallie sent us, and we're going to reassess that whether or not we have a, we can release the conditional approval.
And we've all seen that letter, is that true? I believe so. Okay, I just wanted to double check. So the, the condition then of having a fiscal stabilization plan that is incorporated in our multi-year, you're saying that would go away or the requirement would go away, but you would strongly suggest that it still happen?
So, eh, the condition is just to resolve the budget, the review of the budget. So we released the condition because it was conditional that we had actions that you, we wanted you to take by first interim. And then we're, we're basically saying your budget at adopted budget in June was approved, and then we're just moving on to saying, oh, now we're look at it at first interim to determine at that point in time.
Okay. And moving on to first interim, so I thought I heard you said, if we say that we're positive, and in your estimation it should have been qualified, I think you used not a going concern, is that what you said?
The lack of going concern.
Lack of going concern. What if we say that we're qualified? Is that the same lack of going concern?
No, if you say that you're qualified, we could either concur with your qualified status. Uh, in that case, we can still label you a lack of going concern. That just lets us know that we, we can take intervention if we need to.
Okay, so it's more optional if we say it rather than if you have to correct us. All right. And how, how are you viewing the fact that our CBO position is vacant right now?
That to us is a concern. Um, however, we have been talking with, uh, Dr. Canal, with Dr. Blanco on the recruitment. But yeah, to us, when any time of vacancy is in your chief financial officer or even the director of, of budgets or fiscal services, it's a concern to us. So we're constantly believing, as soon as we, we found out, we, we reached out to Dr. Blanco to find out who was filling in. We've been in constant communication with your fiscal director, so that's always a concern to us.
So first, we're going to have the superintendent, and then Ms. Bailey, and then Ms. Fredericks.
Just for everybody listening, um, we have taken the CBO's job and divided it among the three chiefs that are here. Dr. Canal has experience in being a CBO in another school district, so we're not without direction. I'm doing facilities. I did facilities for the year. We passed the bond when I was the interim superintendent. And Mr. Udo only did fiscal. Dr. Chan Hill is doing ITS. And so we have the CBO position covered. Now, would the three of us like some additional help, of course. But we are meeting with Laco on a regular basis, and, um, I'm competent that the job is being covered right now.
Hi, good evening, and thank you for being here. This has been very helpful. On one of the slides, um, you talked about mechanisms, mechanisms, am I saying that right? Mechanisms, there you go, um, that should be developed proactive, to proactively identify the risks. And my question is that amongst the seven of us here, there are varying, varying, um, levels of board, um, budget comprehension. So we, we don't all understand the budget at the same level. I thought that I heard you mention some type of training that could be provided to the board. I, I thought I heard you mention that. I wasn't sure if you were referencing training the board on understanding the budget.
I've, I've actually done board study sessions on budgets and how budgets are developed. We don't necessarily would do one for you. I mean, that's the chief financial officer's responsibility. I always tell boards, if you don't understand something, don't sign it. Because that's, the fiduciary responsibility falls on the board.
Yeah, and so the reason, and the reason why I ask is because we approve the budgets. We make those approvals. And like you pointed out, we've been deficit spending for year after year after year after year, and I am aware of that. My concern is that when we approve the budgets, it doesn't appear that the cuts need to be as deep as they end up needing to be or should have been. And when you're sitting where we're sitting and we're receiving the information from staff, how do you know that? How would we know that? What do those mechanisms look like? You know, what, what should the board really be expecting? So, I mean, maybe those are CSBA questions, I don't know. But I just have a concern that we get the presentations, we get the first interim, second interim, we approve the budget, and it always seems that we are okay. And then we get to these points. So this is the second time since I've been on the board that Laco has come in and we've had to have this kind of conversation. And I think it even went a little further the first time. And so I'm just concerned that even as a board, we continue to approve budgets that have us deficit spending. And we are told on the back end that, you know, two, three years out, this is where you're going to be, this is where you're going to be. But it seems to always be all right in the end. So I'm just trying to understand with all of the, the, um, the climate, you know, of, of all of the things that are happening beyond our control, that impact our budget, that, you know, we are now being held accountable for trying to keep our teachers and our staff in our classrooms and trying to make sure that our students have the materials and the support that they need in the classrooms with all of this, these other, um, things coming into play. You know, the special ed costs, I mean, how do you mitigate that? You know, how do you not give raises when folks have worked for your organization for ten, fifteen, twenty years, and they, they've never had a raise or, you know, those are probably questions that, I mean, can be answered by staff, but I just think to wait until the drop dead last minute when a district is just really about to just flip over, um, it's kind of stressful. It would have been, it really would have been, I think, nicer to be able to have this conversation before we got to where we're about to tip over. to have this conversation before we got to where we're about to tip over. And if you have someone who can come in and work with the district, with the CBO or with the board to help mitigate us getting to this point, you know, why does it have to happen once we're there, you know? So I just, I just have concerns about this process and the process, this process coming from Laco. Um, I have concerns about the way that we actually do the budget. You know, obviously, our budget process is not working for our district because it hasn't gotten us to the point where we're not deficit spending and I know that we all appear to be watching the budget very closely. So I just have concerns about the budget process. I have concerns about this process. But um, yeah, that was my question, you mentioned mechanisms, so I wasn't sure what you meant by that.
I'll take a stab at this and then turn it back to uh the team here. Couple of things um that I would say. Um, one is what you're picking up from staff is that we do not want to be prescriptive. Uh, we, the language we use speaks to a solvency, it doesn't speak to how you spend your money. What we're making you aware of is that if our hand is forced and candidly inaction or inadequate action forces our hand, that's when we, when we assign somebody else to take on the responsibilities. But we're working really hard not to be in a place and we will not get to a place of being prescriptive as to how you spend your funds. At the same time, when you ask for training, that's part of the reason we take a step back. That said, we will partner with your staff, most definitely. We would also encourage you, as I believe uh Dr. Blanco has, there are numerous um superintendents, uh retired CBOs, the Association of School Boards. There are numerous um avenues that exist to a Board of Education, uh should you want training. I also know um the district through its problems has had some very gifted CBOs, CFOs. It's hard, to your comments, it's very hard. And for um, you know, the average Board of Education member is not elected because they're fiscally, uh fiscal savant, you're here for educational outcomes. And you've had a very unique circumstances staff has addressed, uh coming through the pandemic, then the fires. It has, uh, I think the term was, it has masked some of your challenges. And it, in that regard, these are sort of being lifted off and all of a sudden you are staring at it and feel like it's uh with no, no advance notice. We, I, new to this role, uh, we will take from this also some of the feedback that all of you have offered to us on how it is we might ensure that not only is the message received, but that it's understood. Uh, very important what, what it is you're about. I also need to clarify that uh to the issue of AB two eighteen, it is a challenge and I would also encourage you, I'm, I'm sort of the downer in the evening. The legislation, if there is any legislative relief, will not come soon. The, the only way the legislation happens is one of two ways. They're either going to fund some sort of pool and if you're following the state of the state's finances, unlikely I would suggest at this point, or they're going to change the nature of judgments and um settlements. And uh that kind of reform is typically even slower to come about. It is a challenge, there is no question about that. And it does impact the current environment uh that a student might otherwise enjoy if the current school district isn't making payments. But I have to emphasize, as I did earlier, you have some very serious issues to address. It requires an immediacy of action and that action has to meet with the satisfaction of the board as they look at, excuse me, I didn't mean to elevate them, staff, um, as they uh evaluate the performance of Pasadena. And while it is a fair question to ask what other districts are in peril, uh, it is also the case that most school districts in our county are using fund balance to balance their budgets. And what I mean by that is current year revenues are less than current year expenses. The question is whether or not a school district is able to, so to speak, create a glide path to where they finish above or in the black. We see you as not pulling up, to use this analogy, and hence that is what motivates us and actually compels us to be before you at this time.
Is that all, Ms. Bailey? Ms. Fredericks?
So my, one of my friends is on the board of Inglewood and I'm frantically texting saying, Laco's here. Um, and I said, how long have you been in receivership? Fifteen years. And I know, I know him and I know how hard he works to get out of it. Those are good people. And even with good people that work really hard, it's still very hard to get out of that status. Y'all look very nice people. So you, uh, Mr., I'm sorry, I forgot your name, but the first person. Costello, yeah.
Costello.
Costello. Um, you said you worked as a fiscal advisor for different districts. Uh, probably.
For a district, yes, I did.
For a district, okay, once.
I was placed at a district for approximately two or three years as fiscal advisor.
Well, I was going to ask you, you must know, based on your experience as a fiscal advisor, what the common challenges or common solutions uh for districts? Um, can you kind of share that? I mean, I feel like you probably know the answer, you're just not saying it. But to the topic of being non-prescriptive as well. But um, I guess with this uh budget or plan we're going to present to you and we have to somehow convince you that you have confidence in us. Can you speak to an example of something that, another district that was in this situation, they presented their plan and it turned, it convinced you? Can, can you kind of give an example?
Yeah, I'll, I'll give you an example of one, the one that, in which I was in. Um, they actually had to file the negative certification, so they were at the point where they weren't able to meet their fiscal obligations in the current year. Um, got us really um at the county office, kind of took us by surprise. Um, but we had to intervene with them. Um, we first put a fix, a fiscal expert in there to work with the district. Um, he worked with the district and realized there's a lot of systemic issues going on here within the district. Governance was an issue. Um, fiscal data, because data just drives everything, whether it's your student data, whether it's your financial data, whether it's your facility's master plan. Things weren't just structured correctly um and heightened the concern. So we put him in there, elevated him from a fiscal expert to fiscal advisor. So now he has full stay or resent authority over board action. I would say, I mean, not knowing your culture here too well, because I was embedded in that district almost daily, I got an understanding of how the district operated, how the governing board operated. Um, got to look over their budgets and realize their student data wasn't too accurate. Um, so we had to work on their CalPads to make sure that they were maximizing all their enrollment and all their ADA. Had to work with site presidents, I mean, not site presidents, sites prin, site principals um to make sure that they were capturing all the ADA that they could at their school sites. ADA reporting is an issue, that's a revenue enhancement. Had to go in there and examine all their contracts with their facilities people. Um, some contracts we let sunset, we never executed them or any, executed any terms of the contract because we felt staff had the capacity of doing it in-house. Um, that saved millions. Um, we had to do reduction in force. We were able to stay that off because we issued a retirement incentive and our retirement incentive was issued. Employees took it, so we had to study staffing. We had to put in internal controls for position control at that district. Uh, we had examined the special ed, how they're doing special ed deliveries to revamp the delivery of special education. Um, you know, special ed to me has a, it's a dear place in my heart. Um, but I also believe that children deserve what's best for them. Um, and oftentimes what I want as a parent is not the best for my child because my child, I'm going to want a one-on-one with him everywhere he goes. Uh, the more, most harm I'm doing to my child is that, because they're not breeding their independence. Um, so the professional judgment, there's a lot of different avenues that you have to examine. Like I said, core staffing, if you have staff that retire, you don't fill those vacancies. It, you know, through that, to attrition. You get a lot of savings from attrition. And if you're closing, if you know you're in, in, in a peril of declining enrollment and as soon as a teacher vacates or you want to hire a reading specialist, your data doesn't show that reading is issue but rather than math and you're hiring people to hire, you're doing your budget a disservice, you're doing your children a disservice. Because you will, after a certain point, that expense is not going to equal the money you're coming in. It, it's, it's a balancing act. You really, you have to go in there and that's what the whole point of the expert is and the advisor. They go in there, they have a strong background in fiscal and they can examine some of your operations. But it's not just uh, you know, you don't have the pen and scia. If I did, I wouldn't be here right now, I'd be, you know, I'd be retired somewhere, living in Fiji because I had the answer.
Okay, one last question. Um, for a declining enrollment district, what is a healthy percent utilization of a facility?
I would have to, I mean, you're looking at whether or not it's K twelve, whether or not it's high school. Uh, I wish I can give you a solid answer, but without analyzing your data, without analyzing your facilities, when that, uh, looking at your facility's master plan, wouldn't be able to tell you.
Minimum.
Wouldn't be able to tell you.
Range.
Would, would not be able to tell you because it's complicated. I mean, what, what kind of, what kind of service are you providing these students? Is it, you know, is it going to be a K three, K twelve, K six? Um, what's your enrollment, what's it, you know, what's your percentage of, of capacity at the school, at the site? Um, there's a lot of factors that go into it. I can't just arbitrarily tell you a number without examining. And staff ratios, what kind of staff are you going to have, combo classes, an AP, a principal, it's complicated.
If I might follow up, uh, he was a former bullfighter. Um, I think the, I think the point we would make is it's the right question to ask. But the answer in any given year is going to be the very illustrative answer of it depends. So I could be in a school that is at fifty percent utilization. If every classroom is fifty percent as opposed to just half of the building, we have a different point of view. I could have the other half of the building be utilized in some other fashion and be okay with that. So just not trying to be evasive, but what, it really does matter and it also matters whether you're trending up or trending down. There are too many factors and this is um, apologies to Mr. Castello, why I'm cutting them off. It just goes back to, we're not going to answer the question of being directive. We, we really think it requires a more careful evaluation, more intentionality by the Board of Education and that's what we're looking for when we do that analytic. It isn't just ratios, it isn't just numbers, it's the narrative that associates and puts in context the whole of your budget.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. In December of twenty twenty four, we got a presentation that explained exactly the imminent urgency of us taking action. And in January, I'm not going to speak for my colleagues, but we chose humanity. That doesn't mean that we don't understand exactly where we are or that we don't understand what was going to happen. And if you go to our presentations and hear our comments, you'll see that that was very clearly reflected in our remarks, that we were making a calculated decision based on basic humanity. We wanted to buy some time for all of those families and for unexplainable and, and for the huge sorrow that this city went through. Thank you very much for your presentation. We are very clear now of the things in the pathway forward, we'll make decisions accordingly. Thank you so much for coming.
Anybody else? Oh, the superintendent.
So thank you for being here and the support that you've provided and also acknowledge that we have our representatives from our legislation here this evening from Mr. Harbinian's office and also from Senator Sasha Perez's office and we thank you for being here and your support and caring about BUSD.
Okay, thank you very much for that, it was really helpful and we are going to um.